I will then turn to city manager who, Tom, you might need the clicker, though.
I do need the.
I will meet you halfway. Number four again is our city manager's report on our agenda this afternoon.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the city council, it's time for the next city manager's report, March 2020. We'll just jump right in again as we do with important dates, starting with the planning commission, which will be tomorrow evening. We have several special city council meetings coming up. We'll have the next one on March the 6th at 9:00. This will be for the census complete count committee. There was another special city council meeting at 4:30, which will be the building tour of both the Wells Fargo Building and the Big M Building. We'll start again at the Big M Building at 4:30, and that will be on March 9th. Then our next city council meeting will be, of course, March 16th at 5:30. The chambers business after hours meeting is this week, or, excuse me, on March 26th, but it'll be at the airport. So this will be kind of great because we'll be able to bring folks out to the airport. They'll be able to get tours and look around and sort of goes hand in hand with the proclamation the mayor just read. And that will be from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. on March 26th. And then the next magic fun meeting is at 7:30 on the 27th. I just want to make a quick note here, point out that essentially, once we get to March 16th, we will have had eight city council meetings in a six-week period. So we're really churning through a lot of work here. And I just thought I'd make that known to you all. I know it's a big drain on your time. It's also a big drain on the staff as we continue to try to pull all the materials and stuff that's needed to support the decision-making that you go through. So just an interesting statistic to point out as we go. I did wanted to also mention that we have completed our goal efforts this year. We were able to reconcile the 2019 goals document. I sent that to you. And then also, we finished our goal setting for the year for 2020. So I thought I'd talk just briefly about both of those. When we compare our results from completion rates in 2018 to 2019, you can see that virtually every single department stepped up between 2018 and 2019 with the completion rate of their goals. And we had over 100 goals set in 2019. Our overall completion rate in 2018 was 76%. That beat the 2017 rate by about 2%, but we were able to achieve an 86% or 10% additional increase in the completion rate for our goals for 2019. Several of these goals are multi-year goals, so they take a couple of different years before we can get them completed. But we're making significant progress on the completion of most of the goals that we set for ourselves. And again, these goals are focused primarily on, you know, customers, employees, operations, strategy, and certainly finances. Those are the five component areas that we're focusing our time and attention. The 2020 goals have been set. I delivered that document to you. I want to say it was last week or so. We set 92 goals across the city, and we do hope to build off our improvements that we've made in regard to completion rates. And it's about 65 pages, and as I mentioned, that document was already provided to you. We will see that goal setting for the city will take a different look once we get to strategic planning, because the goals that we currently develop are sort of one-year goals, which is just a one-year forward-facing look at how we can move things forward throughout the city. When we get to strategic planning, we will be coordinating those types of goals with longer-range tactics and activities that move the city towards a specific target that's set by you in the strategic planning. Next up, let's talk about the NDR projects. Just a reminder that the tour of the two buildings for the city hall relocation is going to be on March the 9th. The resilient homebuyer program is something that we're dusting off our materials on and trying to get back up to speed again, particularly now that we're going to have to do a few more acquisitions. We've talked about that pending your approvals as it relates to MI 5 and 6. So we're getting ready for that work. The gathering space project continues to move forward. That was at your direction when we last met. And we have been trying to evaluate when the best time for the NDR program meeting continuation discussion should be. It looks like right around now, we're looking at early April. We'll possibly see, depending upon agendas, if we can avoid a special city council meeting and instead put that topic on a regular council meeting. We've had lots and lots of these meetings, and I know, as I said earlier, it's pretty taxing on everybody. So if we can try to consolidate that and put it into a regular council meeting, I think that would be helpful all the way around. Of course, if you desire something differently, just let me know, and we'll do whatever it is that you'd like. Next up, let's talk a little bit about the census. As you all know, the big day is coming. It's April the 1st, the official count day. And so we've been really hard at work, both Brian Billingsley, our community development director, and several, several members around our community, and certainly in the complete count committee, and Alderman Olson as well. Everyone has been very busy. It's been all hands on deck. You'll see a lot of activities ramp up over this next several weeks as we prepare for the big count. I've got a quick video here for you on just that as we go forward. So "The More Means More" is the slogan for the complete count committee. They came up with that. So we're going to be plastering that all over billboards and signs, and you'll even see it on buses and garbage trucks and the like. So we're pretty excited. I do want to point out a couple of things here to the public. Every single person counts, provided they live in Minot for six months and one day. That's absolutely critical for everyone to know. And what's just as important is that being counted here in Minot has nothing to do with residency. So you can still claim residency in any other state that you've lived in, whether you're an oil worker, or whether you're with the Air Force, or a college student. All we need to know is, and all that needs to happen for you to get counted is if you lived here or resided here for six months and one day. So that's going to be pretty important, and we want to get that message out as well, and that will be one of the themes that we get out. So moving on to the citizens academies, just wanted to remind the public, we have two citizens academies coming up. The fires academy, which will be on April 25th from noon to 4:00, and includes search and rescue, rappelling, auto extrication, and aerial operations. Kind of a neat way to sort of immerse yourself into the fire service and see what they do. The same thing's going to happen for the police department. Between May 5th and 26th, every Tuesday at 6:00, there'll be a number of intensive immersion-based activities, including patrols, crime scene response and investigation, special operations, use of force examples, and learnings and those sorts of things. The public has to register separately for each of these. They're not yet combined. We'd like to do that next year. So if you're interested in the fire one, you can just attend that one, and the information's here on the upper right-hand part of the screen. And of course, the police academy, we've talked about this before. Aaron Moss is the lead there, and you want to apply by a little bit earlier date because there's a background check that goes with that one. So next up, we'll talk a little bit about the Broadway Bridge Gold Star Award. This is really cool, because the Broadway Bridge Replacement Project was recently named the 2019 Gold Star Winner for Excellence in Concrete in the Bridge category of the Ready Mix Concrete Products Association's annual conference. And so the city of Minot, in conjunction with the North Dakota Department of Transportation, you might recall, replaced the aging bridge structure, which was built in 1962. It was later expanded to two lanes north and south in 1971. And this particular award is not new to us. We've won this award two other times. That's why it might be familiar to you. The other two projects were the downtown revitalization project a number of years back, and then the hazard mitigation project for the water treatment plant. That was one other one that won this particular award. So we're really proud of all the staff that have helped to contribute to the progress of that reconstruction, and certainly are grateful for the recognition as well. It is March 1st, or March, wait a minute, what are we on here? March 2nd. And it is hard to imagine that we're looking down the barrel of a new construction season. We're pretty excited about the weather. It looks like the weather, if it continues like this, will allow us a jumpstart on several projects. Of course, we love getting these projects behind us, but nobody really likes the projects as they're going. So we like to keep a communication around what's going on as fluid as we can. And so I thought I'd give you an update on sort of what's coming down the pike here, what to expect as we look forward. We will continue with the work on the concrete panels. You might recall, the weather last year turned on us a little bit earlier than we'd like, and so the concrete panel work that we were doing on South Broadway, we couldn't get quite done. So that work will continue from 16th Avenue Southwest to 20th Avenue Southwest. There'll be grinding, and there'll be replacement and pours and those kinds of things. We expect that that work will be completed by mid-July, and maybe even sooner if we can get an earlier start. So the public pretty much knows what we're doing, because we've done this for a good portion of the Broadway section. We're just kind of continuing this work to finish it out. Flood control phases MI 1 are going to continue, and we're going to have continuing work going on with the flood walls, and certainly with the Broadway pump station. Phases 2 and 3 should be pretty well wrapped up by about mid-2020, and there's going to be a few interruptions on 16th Street, but we don't expect any full road closures. Instead, maybe just a few times where we need to go one lane at a time. Work continues at the water treatment plant with the expansion. We do hope that that will wrap up fairly quick. We're running a bit behind on that schedule. And then the Highway 83 bypass, which was started, of course, as you know, should be completed near the end of June. That's the expansion of Highway 83 bypass. So we're excited about having that done as well. And then we get into a number of the new projects that we'll be starting this year, and there's no shortage of those. In fact, there's over $28 million worth of new capital construction projects that we'll be doing. Of course, the big one here, 31st Avenue Southeast Reconstruction. This is where 31st Avenue Southeast will be reconstructed from Broadway all the way to 13th Street Southeast. And of course, this includes the roundabout, which got a lot of attention recently. So that's going to be a big project, includes a lot of drainage repair and upgrades. Then the 10th Street Southwest Storm Sewer District, near the mall, will be starting work, and we'll be upgrading the storm sewer improvements, and we'll be reconstructing the 10th Street intersection, which will be very good, because if anybody's driven through that intersection right now, it is among the worst in the city at this point. The city hall retaining wall, the award of bid is going to be discussed later this evening, so depending upon your decision on that, that could be moving forward. The 30th Avenue Northeast Sanitary Sewer Project, near the airport, is finally going to be, after several years, taking place. And then we have a joint project where streets and water are going to be working together. We're going to replace the water main on 23rd Street Northwest from 7th Avenue to Crescent Drive, and then the street will be reconstructed on top of that. So that's a good partnering and pooling of resources as well. There'll be several street improvements all around the community. Some of the bigger ones will be 8th Street Northwest from 10th Avenue to 27th Avenue. That'll be a big mill and overlay project. We'll also have Burdick and 27th Street, the southeast intersection, or 27th Street Southeast, the intersection will also be milled and overlaid. And then 16th Avenue Southeast from Hiawatha to Burdick, and 27th Street Southeast intersection will be milled and overlaid. And then finally, 16th, or 13th Street Southeast and 13th Street to Valley Street, there will be another mill and overlay there as well. So we have patching and sidewalk, curb and gutter, replacements and repairs, painting, pavement markings, all that sort of stuff that continues throughout the summer. That'll be going on. And then we also have swift work that'll be taking place, and that swift work will be Swift Site D, and also Sites E will be working on that. So we hope to complete the D and then start, and we'd love to finish E, but I'm not sure we'll get that done this year. We have seven traffic cabinets or traffic signal cabinets that we'll also be replacing. And with these new cabinets, we're upgrading the technology, and eventually we're migrating toward what will be called an intelligent transportation system network. So imagine for a moment that you could drive from one end of Broadway all the way down to the other end of Broadway without stopping ever. Well, except for emergency vehicles, right? Or on Burdick, east to west or west to east, same sort of thing. So we are hopeful that over the next series of years, that we will be able to put in intelligent transportation system infrastructure, and that the lights will be able to talk with one another, and will be synchronized in a way that'll allow us to move traffic from one end of town to the other. And those will be the two corridors that we'll start that work on. Lastly, we are planning to put the flash and beacons at the zoo and the courthouse for the pedestrian crossings. That work will also take place. And so you can see, we'll be quite busy this year with a number of different projects. And we've already taken a number of calls, which I'll get to here in just a little bit about the potholes. We hope to get that addressed here pretty quickly as well. Speaking of potholes, this winter, although it hasn't been awful from a temperature standpoint, has been awful from a temperature fluctuation standpoint. And so we've had some pretty harsh conditions on the roadways. So I want to talk a little bit about this, because we have potholes that are creeping up all over town, and we're not, it's not uncommon in Minot. There are a lot of towns all across North Dakota that are having the same problem. But, you know, the causes of potholes are pretty simple. A lot of water, which we did have, you might recall, late August into September and October. And then we have lots of temperature fluctuations, the freeze thaw, freeze thaw. That continues to work, open, and migrate pavement. And then also, funding and construction timing, that's another one as well. But funding for us is a real concern, because we don't currently have enough funding to keep up with the deterioration that's been going on. For example, we have a 15-year maintenance backlog on the streets right now. This is something that shouldn't be new to you. We've talked about this before when we talked about the pavement index. When I joined the city, the prior maintenance budget, when I joined, was $1.9 million that went to street maintenance. Now, that's just absolutely inadequate to keep a hold of the type of infrastructure that we have. I have been able, with your approvals, to build that maintenance budget up to about $4.5 million. That's what's in this year's budget. So we've done quite well to more than double that. Unfortunately, and you've heard this number as well, it takes about $5.9 million just to maintain the current condition. So at $4.5 million this year, we'll lose a little ground, and that will continue unless we can build up how much we put towards street maintenance. And then I'll just throw this figure out to you, because you've seen this as well, but it's good for the public, because we're getting ready for the budget season, and there's a lot to talk about in this year's budget. But there are great needs going forward. If we want to improve the condition, not just maintain, but improve the condition, just 10 points on the PCI index, then, you know, we need essentially $11 million every year for the next five years. And of course, that doesn't look likely for us, so we're going to have to figure some other things out. But we're doing the best we can with the resources we have. We ask for the patience, public, as we get around town to fix it as much as we can with the resources that we have. Just as a quick side note, I thought I'd mention this. We put 52% more funding to flood control than we are to the street maintenance budget. So I thought, you know, just as a comparison, so you can kind of see how that works out. There's quite a bit of resources going to flood control, and, you know, rightfully so. But the reality is, we have a lot of demands on the city budget. If we didn't have flood control, well, then we'd have a different situation. But that is an important priority for our community. It needs to get done, and so we're having to parse out dollars to go with various buckets, and that means, you know, sometimes there might not be enough to go around. Next up, I wanted to briefly update you on the ERP or the Enterprise Resource Planning Project. This is our software, massive enterprise-wide software project. That work is consuming enormous time and resources from staff all around the city, more particularly finance staff at this point in time, because they're sort of the first ones in the queue, and we're trying to get the budget module up to speed so we can use it this year. There have been lots of process improvements and data importation and training that's been going on. We've been developing and loading and testing the system, and we do hope that essentially by the beginning of May or so, we'll be able to have our first milestone, which will be the completion of the budget module. And that's what we do intend to build the budget in this particular year. So we could have some bumps in the road as we, you know, trial this software and, you know, learn and all of those sorts of things. So we do hope that the budget, and I'm confident the staff are putting a lot of time and effort into this. I'm confident this will go well. But that will be a change for us across the entire city. Next up will be around October of 2020, the human capital management module. That will then be followed up by other modules, and also, we are bringing in asset management and having to integrate asset management at the same time. That will include work order system processing and management. It'll include assignment management for work product or activities in construction and those kinds of things, and then also fleet maintenance. So we are essentially trying to jump light years ahead in a very short period of time. And of course, you know, that work doesn't happen on its own or by itself. Staff are really, really putting a lot of time and effort into all of this, and we're very appreciative. It's very important, and it'll make a huge difference in the long term as to how we move forward. Next up, just for the community, wanted to mention that the annual report is available. We have a few hard copies left, but for anybody who wants an electronic copy, the address is on the web, or, excuse me, on the screen here, and you can just download it or click on it and get an electronic view of it. We do hope folks look at that, because we've been up to a lot of work and up to a lot of great things. And we identified not only our challenges, but our accomplishments for the last year, and sort of talk about where we're going and what we've done. It's really a great document. I think it numbers almost 40 pages this year of information. So anybody who wants to learn about what's really going on in the city, you know, should definitely download or access that via the website. Well, close to last, I wanted to mention that we have been talking with our cohorts in Fargo, and as you all might know, they're essentially going to be, they're looking down the barrel of a huge potential flood for this particular season. And so they have geared up their sandbagging operation, and they have reached out to us, and we have been talking with them about the potential for going down and participating with them. So what we're trying to do is make a call for volunteers, and it looks like we're looking at March 11th, so next Wednesday. It'll be an all-day trip. We'll go from 6:45 a.m. to about 6:30 p.m., and we would like for residents or anyone else who's interested, must be 18 or older, though, for liability reasons, to essentially RSVP to go on this road trip and help Fargo and their residents out with sandbagging. We do anticipate that the bus will leave sharp at 7:00 a.m. on the 11th. We'll arrive in Fargo about 11:00 o'clock. We'll start sandbagging from 11:30 to 12:30. We will have lunch provided, and then we'll sandbag again from 1:15 to 2:15, and then eventually leave for Minot at 2:30, arriving back here in town at 6:30. City leadership is going to take a slight diversion in the afternoon hours to meet with Fargo representatives. But if folks are interested in this, the transportation's provided, the lunch is provided. We just asked for folks to RSVP through Tammy Stroklund and her email address, as well as her phone numbers on the screen here. So we're hopeful, the bus seats, about 54 folks, so we're really hopeful that we can fill the bus. And we've talked with the mayor of Fargo and the city administrator, and they're very much looking forward to us and are extremely grateful, and we'll have operations ready to go, and we'll be well-received, for sure. Lastly, Mayor, if I could get you to join me, we have another staff member that we're going to have to say goodbye to, Mr. Kevin Turnus, our city assessor. I think he's here. Kevin, would you mind coming up and joining us? After 29 years, Kevin Turnus is now finally calling it quits. He was our, has been our assessor for a great deal of time. I'll give this to you, Mayor. And he was hired May 13th, 1991, and then promoted to the Assistant City Assessor, May, or, excuse me, May 10th, 1999, and then finally, City Assessor since May 1st of 2004. So I just want to thank you, Kevin, for your years of service to the city. 29 years is a great number. I think the mayor's going to present you with the plaque and say any words.
Absolutely. So, you know, in the name of the people of the city of Minot, this certificate of appreciation is presented to Mr. Kevin Turnus, Minot City Assessor, from May 13th, 1991 to February 28th, 2020, in grateful recognition of outstanding public service faithfully rendered to the city of Minot. Mr. Kevin Turnus, we thank you for all of your hard work, and do we have, here we go. There's a camera right. We're going to get a picture. So don't go anywhere. So for a great many years, of course, when we went through any of the meetings where we had to make the hard decisions about valuations of property.
We made a few.
We made a few, yes. And then, of course, when a lot of those questions came down at the state from a lot of assessors from around the state of North Dakota, the majority of the time, they came to Minot and asked for Mr. Kevin Turnus, because of his knowledge and years of experience and things like that. So we're certainly losing a vast volume of a lot of tenured understanding of markets and how valuations come to be. And I think it's widely known around the state, Kevin, so we are grateful for all of the hard work that you've done for the citizens of Minot. And you always seem to, despite, you know, some of those folks that may not have agreed in the end, but at least gave a good understanding of how the calculations under state law come to be. So not only on behalf of myself, but this council and many previous councils, and from the state of North Dakota, I also have to present you with the city of Minot Mayor O'Coin to say thank you for the leadership that you provided locally, but around the state as well, Kevin. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Did you want to say anything?
Thank you for setting up for the last 29 years. Thank you very much. Thank you, Kevin. And, yeah, thank you, Kevin, and thank you, Mayor, also. With that, that's the end of my city manager report. I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Alderman Wolski.
Mayor Simma, thanks. Mr. Barry, if you would for me, and maybe with the assistance of Alderman Olson, who was on the census committee, let's do a double check on our six months and a day. As a, just a quick review of the U.S. Census website, their language is slightly different. It is anyone living in your home as of April 1, 2020. And so I think, just so we have clarity in our messaging, and we are making absolutely the entire circumstance of who's counted. So if you guys, I know we've got a meeting coming up on the 6th. It would be a great opportunity to just double-check that.
You know, and I might defer to Brian Billingsley for a more accurate description as well. I know that there are two things to consider, whether or not you've been in the community or where you are resting your head on April 1st. Maybe Brian can better describe that.
Mr. Billingsley.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, yes. Technically, the head count is for April 1st. However, if people live in multiple homes, for example, they may have a residence in Texas, but they also reside in Minot, that's when the six-month rule kicks in. So wherever they live most often is where they count. Those people will count. So that would be the Air Force personnel, the college students, the oilfield workers and so on. They're the ones that would count as residents of Minot if they live here for six months or more, even if they're not here on April 1st, per se.
Okay. Okay. All right, thanks. Thank you.
And for perhaps a little more information as well, the North Dakota League of Cities, to kind of bolster some excitement about the census, has put together what they call the Census Tournament Bracket, pairing the larger cities against the larger cities and smaller cities against the smaller cities, with a two-week checkup every two weeks to see who has the better participation rate. And just so that everyone knows, in Minot, we are first paired against Grafton between March 12th and March 26th. So North Dakota League of Cities has encouraged the mayors to reach out to the opposing mayors and formulate some little goodwill challenge or bet. So I'm going to have to reach out to Grafton and see what he feels, Mr. West feels, is appropriate as for the first two weeks. Alderman Wolski.
Mayor Simma, thank you. Change of topic here slightly, but Tom, as a, maybe request for our next meeting or the near-term future, and I don't, I'm going to bring up a topic here, and my intent is not to raise any particular alarms. This would be an intent to be proactive and prepared, but I think it's probably appropriate for us to dust off our emergency action plan with regards to public health and see what that says. I would also, maybe at our next meeting, I don't know who we have planned for a department report, but either in addition to or as a preemptive report, I think it would be worth calling in First District Health to hear how they are prepared for and what information they would like to share with the public regarding the coronavirus. And then in addition to that, I think it would be appropriate for the city or the council to make this space in this room available, should there be any cause. I'm not suggesting that there is, but one of the advantages of this room is But one of the advantages of this room is the live streaming capability and the ability to, to disseminate information, I think, very effectively. And so this podium and, and our technology in here might be advantageous to them and the larger community. In the event of, I am not suggesting that there is in any form, but in the event that, that we need to pay more attention to what's going on with regards to the coronavirus, I think it would be appropriate for us to be prepared.
Thank you, Alderman Wolsky. Alderman Straight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tom, just in, in terms of the road construction and the, the dollars and cents, I've, I've brought up a number of times of the, how we're throwing Hub City dollars at what, what our priorities are, deferred maintenance. And I think as you move forward, it might be advisable to have some discussion with the community about how you intend those dollars to be spent. I, I think if people have been paying attention, they would say, "Mr. City Manager, why aren't we kicking some of the Hub City dollars towards road construction and fixing some of the roads?" So just food for thought, because I, I think it's, for the budget cycle, it's important.
Mr. Mayor and Alderman Straight, maybe just a quick response to that. The Hub City funding dollars are all accounted for in the CIP. So it's not like we have extra Hub City funding that's just hanging out. We've essentially accounted for that in the projects that we move forward. And, you know, those dollars can be used certainly for road construction and, and those types of things. But it's one of those things where if you use it over here, then you have to backfill what you didn't use to there, and if you use it here, then you, you backfill what was going to be used there. It's just, it's, it's a money source that we use, and the city council's always got the option of what, what money source they want to use for what projects. But of course, all projects are important in the collective, and, and they all need to be sourced at some point. But as we go through the budget process, I would encourage, because it has come up several times, I would encourage the council to pay particular attention in the budget, what the source of funds are that are going toward the various projects. And I think you'll see, you know, we have a number of different sources, sales tax, property tax, special revenue funds, bonds, Hub City funding, and the like. And, and all of those monies are essentially used. I mean, that's how you get up to a $275 million budget, with property taxes only making $26 million of that up. So, but good, good points.
And perhaps just a little further information, as we met last Thursday with the meeting of the mayors at the North Dakota League of Cities. It wasn't directly addressed as Hub City funding, but taking a look at projections for oil revenues and things of that nature, and even the Office of Budget and Management discussing some of the challenges that go along with trying to anticipate what oil prices are doing, considering the latest hiccup because of what Alderman Wolsky had just pointed out. No one had accounted for or anticipated a, a market hit that, that took place because of the coronavirus. But it's certainly something, I think, that both legislative, legislative committees, the Office of Budget and Management, and all of the cities, especially Dickinson, Williston, and us, will be paying close attention to, because that will impact, that price per barrel will impact what that filters down then through the impact dollars, through, through that mechanism. So we'll, we'll certainly keep a close eye on that. And we will be getting updates as well from the North Dakota League of Cities, moving through and up to the next legislative session and beyond. Any further questions? If not, I do want to just dial back very quickly to the Fargo trip next Wednesday, March 11th, to also mention, as I'm sure there will be questions, as far as the transportation, Farmers Union was gracious enough to sponsor the bus, so that, that is going to be coming from their Jamestown office to pick up the 54 riders, or however many volunteers we can get. And so that is going to come at no cost to the citizens. And then, as I am told, that a very basic lunch would be provided for the sandbaggers that is, that are down in Fargo. And if I recall, I, perhaps was the Salvation Army with their sandwiches, that we all fondly remember, that went through either sandbagging or the recovery side of the coin. So from that standpoint, I believe that water will be, be provided as well. Alderman Pittner.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to double back, maybe to Alderman Straight's comments about the Hub City funding. I had a similar question during the last legislative session, and, and actually, from a citizen, asking how, and, and all those dollars are reported to the Legislative Council, and, and they're accounted for. And there is a report that was provided to myself from Mr. Lakefield. So again, I think any, yourself or the public, if they, if they look for those, those dollars, they'll see that they're spent as wisely as possible, and, and obviously, they have to be spent wisely. That was kind of the advisement of, of Legislative Council, was to spend these on infrastructure projects. So just wanted to bring that, I didn't know that it existed until I asked the question, so just wanted to maybe bring it to everyone's attention, so.
Further questions or comments? If not, thank you, Tom. That takes us to number five on our agenda, the City Attorney's Report.
Mr. Mayor, I presented a written report. I'd be happy to take any questions.